Good evening, everybody. It must be Thursday night. This is a special edition, I like to call it, of Born Political. I have a political newcomer, but we just so happened to have a young man with us today that wanted to do some interviewing, trying to learn about the process, the political process. Born Political was started because I really felt like we needed to find out who each other were. We get to the bottom where they grew up, how they grew up, if they're a person that's making decisions in our town at any level. I think we should know who they are. This one, one of the people tonight is a freshly newly appointed counselor and a good friend, I should add. So I can't wait to introduce you to him, but also the student that here tonight, we're gonna get to know them both and a little different. Near the end, I'm gonna have the student ask us a couple of questions and see, hopefully they're not preloaded, but you never know. You never know what you're gonna get. So welcome to the show. I have Alstair Haglund, right? And Dan Gasky. Dan, I'm gonna start with you first. Newly appointed, not elected.
Newly appointed.
I messed up when I said that. It will be newly elected in the fall.
Hopefully, God willing.
I know how you're gonna work.
Yeah.
So I know you pretty well, but a lot of people out here may not. So you know, Born Political is about who you are. And who are you, Dan? Where were you born? Are you a local guy? Did you come from outer space?
So I am a lifelong Groton resident. I was born here, I was born, oh, I was born at the hospital in New London. My parents-
You're a New London guy.
Never lived a day in my life. Well, maybe one night in the hospital when I was a newborn, but I was, my parents moved here from Long Island in the early 90s. So we moved here, they moved here in the early 90s and then they moved, they bought our house in Groton in 93, 94, and my brother and I both there. And so grew up in Groton and my mom's a teacher in the Groton school system. She's at Charles Barnham and my dad is a, started at EB as a nuclear engineer and then moved to a company called Proto Power. They were, ended up being bought out by Zachary, Zachary Nuclear. So he ended up, now works for Zachary and you know, grew up in this town and-
But yours is Groton as it gets.
Oh yeah, I am so glad.
You were actually, if I remember correctly, you were Mr. Falcon.
I was.
At the high school.
Yeah.
So that is, that is about as Groton as you possibly could get.
Yeah, I did. I won Mr. Fa- oh god, you're bringing me back. I won, so every year Fitch High School does a, does a, does, they did, I don't know if they still do it, but they did a male beauty pageant and it was just a stupid fundraiser. They get all these guys making fools of themselves. And I ended up winning.
Oh, I remember. I was there. I witnessed it.
And he was actually, Joe was actually, so the theme I did was I did like, I'm gonna do the candidate theme. So like, you had to do a spirit, a school spirit video. So I did a, I did a, I did like a campaign ad and I ended up getting Joe to endorse me.
I endorsed him for Mr. Falcon.
And it was so, it was so fun.
I feel like I put him over the top, right? Big endorsement.
I remember the night of the show, people were just like, "Oh my gosh, it's Joe Dela Cruz." And I got Chris Conley too to endorse me. So it was like, so it was people like, "Oh my gosh, you got Conley and Dela." It was funny. So then, and then my talent was, I did like a convention speech, like I humbly accept your nomination.
You did a great job that night and so like I said, you were, you were gonna be on multiple times here. I wanna make sure I bring you back, but really-
I'll always come back.
When I first, when I first met you, you were a being that I had not met before. Somebody as young as you were that was as interested in politics, or at least the way government worked, at least at the time. I knocked on your door and your father had answered. And I was, I was getting ready to give my two minute speech to your dad and turn around and run away. And he said, "You don't go anywhere. You gotta meet this, you gotta meet my son." And, and when you walked, when you walked down, I'm like, "Why does this kid wanna meet me? He's young. Why does he care about politics?" And you really cared and you really knew what was going on.
Oh, I knew what was going on. I would, so it all started, it all started actually when I was six years old. And my mom, we were just driving throughout town. I had no idea where we were driving, but we were driving. And it was, these things weren't, these colorful things were like in the, in the ground. I'm like, "What are those things?" And they were, they were campaign signs. And it was 2006 and that was the year Joe Courtney beat Rob Simmons by-
Eighty votes?
Yeah. Eighty-seven is sticking in my head. Don't quote me on that number, but it was the campaign, it was just influx of camp, now I know, it's an influx of campaign cash came in to the town and the region and there were signs everywhere for Rob Simmons and there were signs for Joe Courtney. And I was like, "What are those things?" And I'm like, "I want one of those in our yard. Can we have one of those in our yard?" And I'm like, the sign I was gonna be in politics was an actual literal sign. It wasn't like, so, and my mom was like, "Okay." So she ended up-
So your parents weren't, weren't super political or-
No, no.
They were just kinda mulling about.
They paid attention. They like, they paid attention. And my mom, and my mom, like they paid attention, but they weren't like active or anything. They ended up, my mom ended up, I think she went to Democratic headquarters or she knew somebody who knew Andy Maynard, who was running for state senate at the time. So we ended up getting a Joe Courtney and a state senate, Andy Maynard sign on our, when he was running in 2006. So we had those signs and those were the first signs on the lawn and it was just like, every election cycle, my parents were like, "Oh no, we have to find somebody running, like we know running."
And that's why I thought tonight's show was gonna be perfect, cause I said, Dan, I had scheduled already. And, and then, and then, this is my mother's neighbor, Alstair, right? Alstair, well, welcome to the show.
Thank you.
Another young person and the more, I mean, I said I had never met anybody, but within my family, politics wasn't something that jumped out at me as something I wanna do. It happened later in life. But to meet Dan and now to have someone, and you're not the, you're not the last one. I've started meeting, there's other, there's a lot of other people like you.
Oh no.
Right? You guys are not alone.
No, I'm not alone. And it's really, so I, this brings up, I'm, I'm the executive vice president of Young Democrats in New London County.
Awesome.
And it started with, I ended up just getting a phone call one day from Danny Cruz, who's-
Over in New London.
Over in New London. He gives me a call. He's like, "Hey, do you wanna start a Young Dems New London County chapter with me and Grace Carlos, who actually just got elected to state? She's now president of Young Dems Connecticut. So Grace Carlos was in Monville, Danny Cruz was in New London, I was in Groton. We all kinda got together. We pulled in Sam Sims, who's from East Lime. He's, I think running as an alternate for planning and zoning commission over there this cycle. So it's like, we're all kinda like finding our way and we all, we all bounce ideas off of one another. And it's like, really just kind of like-
And then you're able to add one guy to your list of calls.
I hope that we can get him. I'm hoping.
Alstair, so what got you, and I mean, I know you're, so you're still, you're a high school student currently. What got you interested or?
Well, going all the way back to 2016, my parents, we had some charts for 2015, right? Or 2016, right? They start the presidential primaries. And so my parents had charts for the Democratic and Republican primaries. And so we'd keep track of how many delegates Bernie won or Trump or Cruz or Hillary, whoever won. And so that kind of got me started interested in politics. And then at our house, we get the Wall Street Journal. And so I would always read the like finance section or the news section for fun, whatever, right? And I always noticed my dad would go to the opinion section. I'm like, "Why is my dad so interested in the opinion section, right?" And so I started reading it and reading Google News and all that and just learning more and more about politics. And that got me really interested as well as talking to my dad about politics and seeing his views and-
Yeah. So are you local or did you move here or have you been here?
So I moved here in 2014 from Nashville.
From Nashville? Okay. Yep. Country capital of the world.
Yes, yes.
Country is the capital of the world. So, so in 14, so you're, I mean, you're, you're, you came here as a young person.
Yes.
Cause you're, you said you're 17 now.
Yeah.
So you're a younger person then and is your, are your, is your mom and dad involved in politics or?
So not really, but my dad teaches political science. So I kind of get, he's like, "Let's avoid politics." But I'm like, "Let's talk about politics." So it's kind of-
It's kind of the purpose of the show in a way.
Yeah.
Cause I actually think that, that really it's about dividing up money is what it all boils down to.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's a good way of putting it.
And we know how, we know how intense and how passionate that can be. People don't wanna pay this or wanna pay this or think we should do more of this. And in the end, if we just focus on what the discussions are and what we're trying to accomplish and then knowing the players who are involved, I think it makes it a little softer. So for, but for you now in, in high school, you have an opportunity to learn or to do politics. Are you, are you into class politics or are you?
So at school, we have Model United Nations. That's our only really political club at our school, but it's filled with a bunch of friends who also talk, like politics, maybe not as much as me, but still like politics. And we do more like international issues, but it's fun. And I took the government class and we really have a great government teacher at our school who has a blog about, it's called Presidential Politics for America. And he writes about that. And so I love to read his blog about that.
And now townwide then, we talked off air that you, you obviously know who, who the Rob rule is.
Yes, yes.
But you also, you went and did something with the RTM and learned about, and again, we're, we're two different towns, but we're only, what, one of you said seven that have RTMs?
Seven that have RTMs. It's a dying breed almost.
It is a dying breed.
It's a, it's a very interesting form of-
I, I like it. What do you, what do you think of it when you're, I mean, the representation definitely spread throughout the town.
Yeah. So we have five districts in our town and it's just, sometimes I feel it's a little too cumbersome with 25 people on our RTM. And so that's pretty, pretty massive while our Board of Selectment is only three people. So it's kind of wonky in Waterford. But there's a lot of different viewpoints and I mean, a lot of people can have input with a bigger representative town meeting or RTM.
And voice wise, do you, I mean, it took me a very long time in my life to understand that you could make a change. What got me in politics was they wanna keep it score at my daughter's basketball game.
Yeah.
That's what got me involved. I was a coach. I really didn't really care about politics too much. And when I got to the RT, when I called my friend Liz.
Yep.
Liz Duarte, the god, the godmother of Groton politics here.
Groton Democratic.
Democratic.
Yeah.
She got me involved and, and really it was because I called her and said, "I really have to do something. There's no way." And, and really what I felt was that, that Groton town and most of the people I knew that lived and worked here were competitive enough where they wanted 12 year olds to keep score. Like I wasn't, I'm not the diehard competitive guy, like that cares all about winning, but I cared enough to get involved in politics. And when I got involved and then ultimately became the chair for the RTM on the parking rack and we got that to a vote and they started keeping score, I felt like, wow, you can actually change something. Like that can actually happen. And I've seen change happen a lot. And most of the change that affects you the most is locally.
Yeah.
So the people that you talk to on the RTM, even though they seem politically like they, they might be on the smallest part of government, they usually have the most effect on your everyday life.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. Because the RTM passes or approves the Board of Education budget. And so that affects our schools as well as the budget directly in our town and all the services in our town and the library and all that as opposed to, I guess, when I look at the national level, it feels like nothing ever happens, but at a local level, it's very dynamic.
Yeah. It goes to saying all politics is local.
Yes.
It is. And even nationally, it is local. I mean, if we look, if we start, if we just start looking at the presidential primaries right now for Republicans, you know, it's heavily, it always goes to a winner of either Iowa or New Hampshire, the first states to go.
Yeah.
And in Iowa, it's like you're still knocking doors, you're going to the coffee shop and you know, that's how, I mean, it's, it's their way of life almost.
It is.
It is super exciting and super like, you know, it's like, and now it's gonna be South Carolina for the, but whatever, the order's gonna be.
It's weird.
It's gonna be weird, but like, it's just like, you have, it starts out local and it's like, okay, you weed out, those states weed out for everybody else. Cause it's like once, I mean, after, I think going back to 2008, you know, on the democratic side, it was, you know, you had John Edwards, Hillary Clinton and Barack Obama. And they ended up, you know, they ended up getting the most local fields in Iowa, New Hampshire, South Carolina and Nevada. And then, you know, Edwards was like, Edwards, Edwards, I think he's like, it was-
It's kinda cruising.
He was like, "You know what? It's like, this is a history moment here. We could either have the first woman or the first black person of color as a nominee. He's like, "I'm gonna let history take its course and step out and then obviously all his scandals happen," but-
That could have been the sidestep.
Yeah. That could have been the sidestep as well, but anyway, and then it was just, but like, it was really like, you know, Obama put a lot of effort and there, Obama has a, it's actually a documentary. It's For the People, The Election of Barack Obama. And you can see his campaign launch and you can see his-
Oh, he did something different.
Yeah, he did something, he did, he did his campaign launch and then he did, I mean, just doing all, he had all his numbers that he just revised, changed the game. And it was just like, his campaign team was, I call it the 18th there, like, and they're all doing-
And at your age to be that excited about talking, cause even when you were mentioning to people in the primary, I'm like, "Oh, that's right. I forgot about Edwards."
Oh yeah.
Like they're certain.
Oh, there were more, I mean, we had Chris, our own senator, Chris Dodd ran in that election. And it was just like-
I think he did.
Yeah, he did. I got you.
But so Alstair, I, I, as promised, you know, I wanted to give you some time also. I knew you had a couple of questions. And I think you asking Dan some questions, maybe, I mean, you are much closer in age than you and I. And even closer than, than you and I too.
Yeah, I know. I've known you a long time though.
I'm like an old man at the table.
Well, it was a funny story. I, I was sitting with a fellow counselor and I don't know if we were in a meeting or if we, what we were doing, but it was very funny. I'm like, you know, when I was in high school, I'm like, this is going ways back now. And she teases me. She's like, "Ways back? That is not a ways back, my friend. That is only five years ago." I'm like, "It was four or five years ago." And she's like, "That is not a ways back." She's like, "That may be a ways back in your lifetime, but that's not a ways back in reality." I'm like, "That's what I said." I'm like, "I'm 20, I'm 22 now and I was like, I was 18 at the time. That was four years ago." I'm like, "That's a ways back for me in my lifetime, but-"
But you're 17 to 22 right now. Has been a lifetime. He's gone to college, graduated. So a lot of things have happened. So Alstair, I'll, I'm gonna let you ask some questions. I knew you had a couple.
So I guess you mentioned that you were involved with the Young Democrats. What drove you to the Democratic Party versus the Republican or Green or Libertarian Party?
So it was always, I mean, I, I think I always was a Democrat. There was no, and it was just, you know, we were talking about this off air earlier, but it's like, that, Joe was saying over here that he always asked like, you know, where you come from, where you're about. And it's like, I was a Democrat, my mom's a teacher.
Yeah.
So she's in a union. She's active in her union and you know, it's like unions and public education are like, they tend to go more Democrat and because our party believes in that. And then my dad works in nuclear power, which is clean energy. So it's like, he's actually unaffiliated, but he, that leans Democrat. And then actually, my grandfather got super interested in 2008 Democratic presidential primaries and like loved Obama. It was on the Obama train early and it was like Obama all the way.
So you had to share that with your grandfather.
So I got to share that with my grandfather. And it was just always like, you know, and it's, my whole family is just Democrat. My dad is like, our unaffiliated, my dad's like, "No, I'm an unaffiliated, registered unaffiliated." And he likes his-
I didn't even know my, I don't know if my father's Republican or Democrat. He doesn't talk about politics.
I know. It's like-
It doesn't, it's not something that is in this, in this, what he wants to talk about.
I know. And it's like, and I, and I just like, I always like, you know, I knew, I just knew. And I was just like, you know, this is my upbringing. Like I grew up in a-
Issues drive you.
Yeah, it was totally issues.
A lot of it is based on issues and, and right now, there's some big ones.
Yeah, being young and like at that time, it was okay, public education, you know, Republicans tend to go towards charter schools and school choi-, I mean, we've-
School choice and rebates.
Rebate. And then, you know, those charters was there in union.
No, they're not.
They're not. So that was another thing. And my mom was active in her union and you know, my mom's union has gotten her a health insurance, a good salary. I mean, I saw things that, you know, that helped like-
To help you all.
To help me also.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, you know, so it was, it was super just great. And it was just like, the family was just, and then my grandmother was a nurse and you know, she was Democrat. My, my, my grandfather became Democrat cause he was anti-Vietnam War. So he was like, he was-
Funny because before I think nurses could have been, and they may be leaning towards Republican now. Like things, I, I think it doesn't really matter. It's less career based now. Where police officers are largely Republican, where I think in the seventies and eighties, they were largely Democrat.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the whole, it was the whole union thing.
Yeah, a lot of it had to do with union and working. And now I think social issues will drive people to one side or the other. And unfortunately, like the social issues really aren't, although they're the talk of the day.
Yeah.
It's really not the nuts and bolts of what government mostly does.
Dividing up money.
Dividing up money.
Well, we talked about back in the day. I mean, there was just, there was nothing that really defined you as a Republican or a Democrat. If, I mean, you think about, I mean, just you, you're thinking about Lowell Liker, who just, the former Connecticut governor, Senator and Congressman, you know, he was viewed as a liberal Republican. And I mean, he ended up leaving the Republican Party in the nineties because you know, they're, the parties start, conservatives ended up going into the Republican area, Republican Party and liberals ended up going into the Democratic Party. And you saw, you know, conservative Democrats going into the Republican Part, changing to the Republican Part. The name I'm thinking of right now, I don't know why. It's coming, but Howard Hefflin, the former Senator from Alabama and- No, not Hefflin. Shelby, Shelby, Richard Shelby, who was elected as a Democrat in the eighties and then moved into the Republican Party and just recently left the Senate.
You have any, you have another question?
So I guess, do you have any siblings?
I do. I have an older brother. I have, my older brother, it's really interesting.
It's a hardcore Republican. No, I'm kidding.
Not, not more than, so my older brother is, my brother is in a PhD program for mathematics. He really likes numbers and really likes math and science. And I like, really like history, English and government and all that stuff. So it's like, we're just, me and my brother, we're total polar opposites. And it's like, we're just like personality. I remember I asked a teacher who had my brother, this is in high school, like you have my brother. He's like, "Are we anything he like?" And he's like, "I've taught siblings before. I've never met any more siblings, any more different than you two." And it's, it was just like, we're just different. I like, you know, we get along fine. We just have different interests. And it's like, you know, he was into music and art. And I was into sports and athletics and just-
You have watched my show. You're asking my question.
Yeah. Well, I guess, did he affect, did he give you or help you develop any political opinions?
If anything, he, I shaped his political opinion. Like it was, cause I got into it at a very young age. And I would be like, I have like all the mailers still. I have like your mailer from 2016. I still have, I have, I probably have your, I can probably find an RTM mailer from when you were running from RTM and they just had all the Democratic candidates on one flyer. And it's just like, heck, I'm like, I probably had that. I definitely have a council.
If your brother, if your brother's that much into math and a lot of those guys really could care less.
And my brother, I think my brother shaped my influences in music. I mean, my brother is an amazing saxophone player. And I ended up doing band as well. And I think it was just like, you know, it shaped that. And it's just like, you know, my brother is, he's really into cars and he's a huge NASCAR fan.
Really?
Yeah. My brother is a huge NASCAR fan. Oh, he, no, no one does. It's like, you know, we go to NASCAR races and I'm like, I feel like we're the misfits just sitting in a NASCAR.
So you got a huge Democratic family, but on Sundays NASCAR's on the TV. See people-
So, no, there was a fight when we were younger. Cause I would wa-, I would wanna watch football. I would wanna watch football. And he would, it'd be like, so it was really interesting in our household. It'd be like, you know, it's like, and my brother's like, it would go from football and then it'd be like, "All right, now it's baseball season." And it's like, and my brother, I remember it was one, one time, one time. He's like, "Can NASCAR just be the season, like just a month? Can NASCAR be the highlight in our house?" And it's like, it was February, March became NASCAR month.
It's hard to watch. I mean, I understand. I think in person is probably cool, but it's hard. I think Philly would be hard to watch.
He got into the, like the tire, like we went to New Hampshire Motor Speedway up in New Hampshire and he ended up, we ended up getting, it was for, he, we ended up going down on the track and he ended up running into crew chief and he was like asking all the, the crews for the cars about like tire pressure and like track bar adjustments. And I'm like, "What the?", I'm like, "I have no idea what he-"
Cause there's a lot of math involved.
Yeah, it was a lot of math involved. So-
Tons of math involved.
Part of me thinks he likes it. So why he likes, I mean, so it's like-
We're getting close to being out of time. I told you this would be fast.
Yeah.
It's less than five minutes. So I'm gonna give you another chance to ask another question.
Could I ask a question to you?
Absolutely.
So I guess, when did you decide that you wanted to be run for representative in the General Assembly of Connecticut?
Representative was a big jump because I, it really wasn't part of the plan. None of it.
Yeah.
Seems like everything I did in my career wasn't part of a plan.
No.
But just as, as things piled up, it kinda put me in a spot where a lot of it had to do with the opiate crisis at the time. My son was someone that was, that fell to it, was addicted to Percocets. And I just felt like the state wasn't doing enough or the money wasn't getting directed the right way. And for someone that worked full time at the time, it's very difficult to walk into your boss's office and tell him that, "Hey, I'm thinking of running for state representative." I was, I think, I don't wanna say lied to, but I think everyone that's running, when you go to Hartford and ask them how much time it takes, they always are on the, on the, on the shy side. They don't tell you that you'll be there almost every single night. Or at least even when you're home, you're at all the meetings. And I think people that, like myself or like you, that get involved, you love, you love your community and you're willing to put the work in. So you, so you go ahead and jump in with two feet. And I did that. And it was one of the greatest, best experiences of my life. Any step I've ever been at, I started at RTM, which we call, you know, for all intensive purposes, probably the closest to the people.
Yeah.
Cause it was my neighborhood that I was representing. But when you get there, you're like, "Wow, my, my neighborhood trusts me that I'm gonna make the right decision for my neighborhood." And when I got elected to council, you say, "Wow, 40,000 people." Forty thousand people.
No, you, you, you've mentioned this to me.
Yeah.
And it's like, and when you got to the state, it was like for two to three million.
Yes, two to three million people.
Population. And it's-
You're making decisions.
You're making decisions to that. And I remember it was my first vote a couple of weeks ago and I'm like, I, I thought back to that line. I'm like, "I am making decisions for roughly 40,000 people."
It's pretty-
That is what my vote is going to. And it's like, it's a big responsibility. It is a huge responsibility. And it's like, part of me was like, I had to like stop for a second. I was like, "Whoa."
It's humbling.
And no, it was humbling. It was really like-
I'll let you say one more thing here. We're all running out.
How much influence in the General Assembly, like if you say, "I wanna direct more funding to the op-, to help fix the opioid crisis," could you really make a big change or would you need to gather the support of your Democratic caucus?
There's 150 some odd members. It happened to be, that was a top item and you know, and a lot of people had been affected by it. So people wanted to put money there. And what, in government, you can get a group of people that are willing to throw the money into a pot. It really comes down to putting it in the right place. And I wanted to make sure I could do that. And I will tell you, there's freshmen that go up there that can impact the legislature that day, that minute. If they have something they came to bring and it's important to everybody, they can make that happen. And that's kinda shocked me because I felt like when I went up there, it's like, "Okay, Joe, sit in the corner."
Yeah.
And we really, you know, we're gonna not talk to you as much. We came in with a very close vote count. So they was, they were forced to listen to me.
Yeah.
Because everything mattered and the votes were so close. But in the end, if you, if you're honest and you're, and you're heartfelt and that you're really trying to do something positive, your colleagues will listen to you and you can get almost anything done.
Yeah, it's building coalitions. You have to build coalitions and it's like, yeah, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta get a majority vote. If you don't have a majority vote, it's not getting done.
And with that, we are, we are just about out of time here. This is Born Political. Again, Dan, thank you for coming on.
Thank you for having me.
This will 100% not be your last time. Also, you'll always be welcome back too.
Thank you.
We'll continue this conversation. I'm Joe Dela Cruz. This is Born Political. When people tell me that they're worried about the future, I'm less worried cause I meet folks like this every single day. This is the next generation. And they're not just excited about their community, they're willing to roll up their sleeves and get work done. And that's what these two are gonna do here. Great to have you guys on the show and we'll see you next time. and get work done, and that's what these two are gonna do here. Great to have you guys on the show, and we'll see you next time.